Good evening. This is a regular meeting of Athens City Council. It's Tuesday, January 3rd, 2012, on about 7:30 when we try to start. First of all, we need to establish a quorum. We have a quorum with six members here. Steve Patterson, I think a lot of you were here for our earlier announcements when we were sworn in. Steve Patterson was sworn in early because his wife was due to have twins over the weekend, and she actually did have twins, twin girls, on Monday. Delia Rose, Alana Leslie, twin girls. They're doing fine. Mom is doing fine. Dad is not here.[71.06][71.06](Laughter). So, first of all, I would like -- so, we do have a quorum. We can conduct business. We have just some housekeeping duty to take care of tonight. The first one is to appoint a clerk of council. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I move to appoint Debbie Walker as our clerk.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. No one there that would be a problem?
I'd like to say something. Debbie is our brain trust, and I appreciate so much what she's done, especially over the past several years, because I've been kind of the junior, not so much junior now, member of council, and it's -- she helps us so much, and so I'd really like to thank her.
Thank you.
And the real junior members of council will go soon discover how invaluable she is to everything that goes on. Thank you for appointing Debbie Walker as clerk of council, once again. Our next duty is to select a president pro tem when the president is out of town or not at a meeting, and an acting president pro tem for when both the president and the pro tem are incapacitated for one reason or another. First of all, could I have a motion to select a -- to appoint a president pro tem? Member Butler, again.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be honored and delighted to -- and would like to move to appoint Mr. Ilahu Ghazni, member-at-large, as the president pro tem.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor selecting Ilahu Ghazni as president pro tem, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Opposed, same sign? No sign? Thank you. President pro tem, Ilahu Ghazni. Thank you. And motion to appoint an acting president pro tem. Do I have a motion?
I would like to move to appoint my esteemed colleague, Tim Butler, from the West Side, as acting pro tem.
Second.
Seconds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Could I have opposed if I wanted to?
You could vote against it if you wanted, but obviously, we're not going to listen to it.[234.40][234.40](Laughter). By the way, president pro tem is the next senior member to the president, and I was served as pro tem before because I was a senior member at that time. So, Member Ghazni and Member Butler came on council at the same time, so they were both eligible for the position. There was supposedly some arm wrestling that we didn't see, but they've worked it out, and we welcome Mr. Ghazni as president pro tem and Mr. Butler as acting pro tem. Next housekeeping duty, could I have a motion to designate Patrick Lang as the parliamentarian of the council?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to have Mr. Patrick Lang designated as the parliamentarian.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Thank you, Patrick. Congratulations. And Patrick, thank you for working with council and with the administration to bring some very long -- I don't want to say long-winded, but problems that we've been dealing with for a long time, and I think you had a lot to do with those. Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to say? Not this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.[333.69][333.69](Laughter). Okay. Communications. I have just a couple of communications, then I'm going to ask for communications from other elected officials. First of all, our director of Public Works, Andy Stone, is hosting an open house at the Ohio University Inn tomorrow afternoon, I think it's from 1:00 to 4:30. Is that correct? He has some plans for renovations of streets and sidewalks along Richland Avenue, south of Dairy Lane. We've done a lot of work. We're going to be replacing the bridge at the top of the hill on Richland Avenue. We built a new roundabout, so that part of Richland Avenue is pretty much taken care of, but from Dairy Lane south, it gets a little rougher. And so, Andy Stone is inviting everybody, particularly people who live on or use Richland Avenue as part of their transportation on a daily basis. So, I -- do you know what room? At the OU room?
No, I don't know.
But it's probably one of the upstairs rooms. If you go, just ask at the desk, and it's 1:00 to 4:30. He will be there. Other people that you could talk to will be there. It would be a good thing to come. And so, he's, at this moment, seeking input. We are not suggesting that this is happening imminently, but it's something that we're putting together for the near future.
The first step.
Yes.
And the times again?
I'm sorry?
The times again? The time tomorrow? What time?
1:00 to 4:30 at the Ohio University Inn.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
He's also -- Mr. Stone, I believe, is also particularly interested in talking to business owners and residents on Richland Avenue, so those stakeholders who particularly like to hear from. If you know of any of those persons, managers of businesses, owners of businesses on Richland Avenue, that would be very helpful for them to be there, as well as anybody who lives along that street.
It would be also very helpful to Mr. Stone for putting together a final plan. Also, particularly for new council members and maybe some of the members of the audience, we meet every Monday. The first and third Mondays are regular council meetings. The second and fourth Mondays are committee meetings. If we have a fifth Monday, as we do in January, normally, we take that day off. There had been occasions when we've needed to complete some business, but that's usually toward the end of the year, not the first of the year. So, and one of our Mondays turns to a Tuesday because of Martin Luther King Day. It's coming up on the 16th, so Monday, the 16th, we will be meeting on Tuesday, the 17th, just to confuse people. Any for this. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile.
Well, welcome to a new council. It's good to see you all here. A couple of things. I believe you've been given your committee assignments. Let me start off by saying I always flow a free information flow between my administration and council members. The only thing I ask is that you keep us in the loop as administrators. If you have a sit-down with Andy Stone and come up with a world-shaking, problem-solving solution, please let us know. And it goes for all the other areas of expertise that you'll be doing as committees. I look forward to your participation. If you remember at the orientation, the conversation with former member Bain said that she'd like to be a more robust, have a more robust council. I say that at my peril, I know.[585.54][585.54](Laughter). A couple of other things I do want to mention. One is, of course, we just received today, the ladder truck just arrived, so we're going to have a PR event at 11 o'clock tomorrow at Station 1. You probably won't be able to miss it because it's probably a big red truck.
That's on Columbus Road, right?
Columbus Road, yes. Station, the headquarters on Columbus Road. So, we've got a new fire truck for the new year, and as I say, we'll be there just to see what's going on. You've got in your mailbox, I believe Debbie put in your mailbox, the list of holidays for the city, as well as, on the other side, you're going to see when the trash routes are, and I felt it'd be nice to give it to you so you have some information for your constituents when they call up and say, when's it going to get picked up and when is City Hall open and closed. Again, to reiterate, the South Richland Avenue public hearing tomorrow, a public soiree, it's actually worth in conjunction of a engineering firm called Tech Engineering. We're looking at solutions. They're covering everything from Dairy Lane down to, I believe, Carriage Hill and Hooper is the scope we're looking at at that point, so that would be the section we're working on right now. Again, it's a slow progression. Last, of course, there's going to be a planning commission meeting tomorrow, and we have two Title 41s. This is where we do a scope of work for developments. One is going to be on State Route 56. It's going to be Family Oxygen, and the other one is the Wasserman Group on Stimson Garden, called Stimson Garden Apartments. That is where the Delavino is, and I believe I've heard some input on that. So, just to let you know, 12 o'clock tomorrow in these chambers, we'll be doing a review of the Title 41. And again, I'd like, I look forward to working with you. There are lots of things to do. You never run out of things to do in a city in terms of how to make it work better for everybody. And with that, welcome aboard, everybody.
Attorney, ahead.
I would also like to say welcome to everyone. Welcome back. Welcome to the new members. The auditor's office door is open from 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. You are welcome to stop by if you have any questions. Just want to meet the people that work there. You can call and set up a time if you just have a few minutes and want to stop by. If I'm not available, Deputy Auditor Hazel will be happy to talk to you, introduce you to people, show you around, whatever you want. That goes for anybody, members of the community also. If you can figure out where we are, then you're welcome to stop by.[751.32][751.32](Laughter). Thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. Law Director, Patrick Lang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please allow me to join the chorus of administration officials here today to congratulate the new members of Athens City Council, as well as the returning members, and say that really looking forward to working with you during the session. It's kind of a tradition of sorts that the law director gives a brief annual report at the first January meeting, and I will do that, although before I do, I'd like to just address one issue which is kind of something I've gotten a lot of calls about here, and as well as something that I experienced firsthand shock this weekend, as I was gone for the New Year's weekend and was rushing to get back to Athens by 4:00 on Sunday because, of course, the Bengals were playing the Baltimore Ravens that day, and I knew that Channel 10 in Columbus was going to be carrying the game, and you know, we've got the playoffs on the line, so you know, it's a big deal. So, you can imagine my surprise when I get back to the house and turn on the TV, and Pittsburgh Steelers are on TV, and it took me a while to figure out that I was watching the Huntington Charleston CBS affiliate and not the Columbus affiliate now. So, again, this has been an issue that has come up a lot today in my office because I want to clear up just kind of what the city's role in this is, and there was a time when cable providers had to have an individual franchise agreement with municipalities, and that governed certain aspects of the relationship or what was being provided on cable. Now, in 2007, the state law changed in this regard. It was Senate Bill 117, which basically granted the Ohio Department of Commerce exclusive jurisdiction over these sorts of matters. So, I very much am glad for the people that have called in to ask about this process today, and I just want to make clear for everyone here and for anyone watching at home that if they are unhappy with the channels that are being carried by Time Warner Cable here in Athens, then they are certainly free to contact Time Warner to express their displeasure with the changes, but that there's really nothing that the city can do about that. There is, I also understand, and I'm not an expert on federal communications law here, but I understand that there is a process through which individual TV stations can petition the FCC to essentially ask them to require a cable provider to carry a certain station, but that's a remedy that would be available to a station, not to an individual viewer. So, just wanted to clear that up, and with that, I will dive into a very brief update here. My job as law director requires a lot of things. Probably the single most important aspect of it is just to be the first line of legal defense for the city, and that has with lawsuits or with anything, any kind of litigation. Just as importantly, I think a big part of the job is to try to keep things from getting to that level, and that's why it's been such a pleasure to work with the previous two councils and with Mayor Wile's administration to try to address issues before they rise to the level of being things that are going to show up on my desk. And so, I'm very pleased to say that 2011 was a very good year in that regard. We are, in fact, I can just tell you the four pending cases that we've got right now that are still outstanding as civil matters involving the city. One is matter versus the city of Athens, which involves an infrastructure issue, say a water line break and some alleged damages that stem from that. There's Larry's Incorporated versus the city of Athens, which also is dealing with an infrastructure issue involving a drainage pipe. Procos versus the city of Athens, and also against some current and former members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, which deals with some alleged First Amendment issues as it pertains to an old version of the city of Athens zoning code. And then Integrated Services versus the city of Athens, which is a taxpayer, what's called a taxpayer lawsuit, and that deals with some issues involving the city's approval for the construction of a residential facility on Graham Drive. So, you know, compared to where, you know, things have traditionally been an average year in the past, this is extremely good news for the city, and again, I would say that most of that credit belongs with this administration and with this council that has been proactive in trying to deal with problems. Thank you all for that. In addition to defending the city in court, my office is also responsible for the prosecution of misdemeanor crimes in the Athens County Municipal Court, and some of you may have seen, and there's an excellent article in the Athens News just today, talking about kind of crime in Athens in 2011, and you may have seen that over 3,000 misdemeanor cases were filed in municipal court in 2011. And I've got an excellent staff of prosecutor, three full-time prosecutors in my office. We've got James Stanley and Tracy Meek and Lisa Eliason, who do a fantastic job of staying on top of the criminal prosecutions for the city. And my office is also involved in any number of other areas, including contract negotiations with some of our bargaining units. We work with the auditor's office very closely in trying to recover delinquent income taxes for the city. We work heavily with the code office on a number of issues, and not the least of which is staying on top of the landlord-tenant forms, which is a great deal of paperwork that goes out into the mails every year. I guess if I would make any plug for any sort of, you know, lobbying on any issue here, I would just ask if we could maybe find some way to make that more electronic just for the sake of saving trees. If nothing else, I walked into my office the other day when we were preparing the mailers, and it was just mountains of paper everywhere, but that's what the current requirements call for, is that a paper letter gets sent. But anyway, aside from that little plug, that pretty well covers everything, and I'll take any questions or just let you move along to the meeting. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay. Next on our agenda is announcements in other business, a section of the agenda that usually is asking for committee meetings to occur next week.
I would like a committee meeting for planning and development, please.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President. I need a transportation committee meeting.
Okay. Member Alahu. Member Naisli.
Finance and personnel.
Okay. These three committees will be having committee meetings beginning at 7:00 next Monday. If anybody else has anything to add, we're always happy to do that. But, so, we'll go ahead with these plans for next week. And the very next agenda item is opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items, city services not covered on the agenda. That leaves it pretty wide open, a whole lot of city services or items. So, yes, if you have something to speak, you need to come up, introduce yourself, give us your address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Abraham Alasoff, A, P.O. Box 2323, Athens, Ohio. I'm glad to see there's a new council, maybe there's some willingness for change in the new year. I want to address the decade-long practice of water fluoridation that's been going on in the city. It was voted down three times by the citizens of Athens, twice in the '60s and once in 1970 overwhelmingly, and we continue to do it today as of a vote that happened on council in 1989 on a 4-3 vote, lame duck session, and now we're stuck with the practice that is very expensive. It costs roughly $20,000 a year just for the chemical, and not to mention all the other problems that go wrong with it, with the corrosion of the piping and the walls inside of the water treatment plant, which I'm sure if any of you guys have had a tour of the water treatment plant, Crystal Kennard has showed you. I think we should end this practice. It's long overdue to get it out of the water. We have other municipalities in the state of Ohio that have gotten rid of it. One would be in Yellis Springs, Ohio, and I could name off another major municipality in the country. Tampa Bay, Florida, has repealed it out of the water for economic reasons, and not only are their economic, it's economically a damper on the city, there's also potential health risks that I think need to be addressed. It was originally done with good intention, but since then, new sciences came out showing that it's maybe not as what we intended it to be, with the CDC just last year saying that they recommend lowering the amount of water fluoridation by half because it's causing dental fluoresces in children, and what some of the viewers may not know is dental fluoresces is brittleing of the bone, brittleing of the teeth. So, if that's causing that to our teeth, I can only imagine what we're not seeing underneath the skin. So, I'd like to see us removed from the water and maybe challenge the EPA on this supposed mandate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other citizens, sir?
I'm Dr. Bill Osso from Athens County, and again, I will address the subject of fluoridation. Years ago, when I was teaching college chemistry, I came upon a rather interesting subject, namely, the element fluorine, fluorine, because of its very high reactivity and extremely small size. So, I decided to study this in more detail, and I spent the next 12 or so years gathering as much information as I could on it. I found out that this whole mess of fluoridation began in 1939 amid the offices of Dr. H. Stanley Dean, and he did a number of experiments confirming that fluoridation was helpful to the teeth and the rest of the body. Well, there was nobody disputing Mr. Time, but later, several years later, there were experiments done, and the experiments completely disputed what Dr. Dean had said, and he later admitted that he misused some of the data. So, from then on in, his name became Anasima, but that didn't stop other people later from using his name, assuming that the people would not remember what actually took place. I'd like to fast-forward now to present, well, several years ago, the government decided that they were going to outlaw any waste that would enter the environment through the atmosphere, and so that placed a real problem with the, with the, those who, the CEOs who were in charge of handling the waste products. And so, what they did was, they said, okay, what do we do with it? Well, what they can do is they can throw it back in the atmosphere. That wouldn't work. Or we can bury it. That wouldn't work. So, the next thing they decide on was, well, what else can we do? Well, they found that you can dispose of it legally at $40,000 for a large truckload, but that didn't sit well with the pocketbook, the pocketbooks of the CEOs. So, they tried another approach. They said, well, let's see what about the dumb Americans. Maybe we can calm the dumb Americans into believing that this is good for the teeth, and they did. And the dumb Americans believed it, and for years to come, people remember that this idea was perpetuated. So, then the next thing is, okay, so then they did find a way of doing it. So, how could they, what could they do about distributing the products, the waste products? Well, they decided they could satisfy the government if they scraped the solid smoke stacks and collected the waste products, which is what they did, and the waste products amounted to a considerable amount, and as I said earlier, $40,000 for a large truckload to get rid of this stuff legally.
You've gone over your time a little bit, so just can you wind it up quickly? Three minutes.
Is that it?
That's it. Wind it up quickly, and we'll be okay.
Okay. Anyhow, I'd like to say that there was also, as the International Academy of Oral Medicine and Toxicology came, was instituted in 1984, and they came out strongly against, they have chapters, 11 countries and four continents, and they came out strongly against fluoridation. And they said, it's not good for the health, and it's not good for the teeth. It does nothing for the teeth. In fact, it makes the teeth hard but brittle. And I guess I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Other members of the audience, sir?
Well, my name is Dane Waller, and I live at 155 Morris. I'm also here of public health concern. I'm very concerned about fluoride or hydrofluorosilic acid being in our water supply. I was back here in the fall saying the exact same thing, but still haven't seen anything done, and I'm really worried for all the citizens of this county. It's hurting everyone. No one's immune to it. I don't understand the opposition to this idea. As my colleague just laid out, it was a fraud in the beginning, and it's a fraud now. And I'd like to point out, since I was last here in the fall, seven American cities and five Canadian have taken fluoride out of the water, the most recent being Hartland Township in Michigan. And a very important point that I wanted to make, I said this last time, but there's new members here. I'd like to say it, Henry Rodriguez, the Texas chairman of the League of United Latin American Citizens, is quoted as saying, "This is about forcing us to be medicated through our drinking water without our consent or full disclosure of the risks." And that's a very dangerous thing to be treading on, especially for the city, for mass medicating the public against their consent. I mean, down the line, if it finally comes out nationally that fluoride is neurotoxin, which it is, I mean, you could have a whole city of people filing lawsuits against the city. It's mass medication without consent. That's a serious problem. And I just urge the new council here to legislation ordinance something, just please stop this fluoridation of our water. It's expensive, and most importantly to me, it's health concern. And I have a documentary here for the seven members. It's 29 minutes long. It's called "The Fluoride Deception." 29 minutes is your time, and that's all it takes. It sums it all up for you.
Other members of the audience? One more here?
My name is Toren Jacobs. I live on 8133 Dairy Lane, and so am in the middle of the council. Thank you for listening to us, and I know you're probably annoyed with our speeches about water fluoridation, but I just want you to listen to very sincerely what we're asking for. All we're asking for is simply the right to have clean and safe drinking water. And when science and government comes out and says that water fluoride as a And when science and government comes out and says that fluoride is a toxin and overexposure to fluoride, overexposure to fluoride has led to ADHD, osteoporosis, and of course, dengue phlorosis, we need to use common sense and remove this from our drinking water supply. It really has no business in there. Like I said, I think about every time when I brush my teeth or dry, when I get my water from the tap, is how much am I exposing myself to this and am I poisoning myself? And of course, the Dental Association, they always talk about that the myth is that it's good for your teeth, water fluoridation is. That's just not the case. Of course, when you got up this morning, you brushed your teeth, and what did you do with the toothpaste? Did you swallow it or did you spit it out? Of course, you spit it out because that's what you're supposed to do. And of course, in the back of the toothpaste tube, it says, if you ingest this, please call the Poison Control Center. So if it's so good for your teeth, why are we ingesting this in the first place? So it's not a bunch of paranoia or anything like that. It's just, you just want clean, safe drinking water. And I've seen people and I've seen people with dengue phlorosis, and it is a scary thing. And I've taken steps to remove it from my diet as much as possible. So I just want you guys to please listen to our concerns and help us remove it from the water. So thank you very much for listening and have a great evening.
Thank you.
My name is Dane McCarthy. I live at 9930 Montserrat Road in Athens County. And I just want to add whatever I can to the argument that's being made against the addition of hexamethylsilic acid into the Athens and all throughout the county, the drinking water. This has been the problem in Europe, that people have protested against being medicated without their permission by non-doctors who don't really understand the science. Fluide is an overarching term, and I'm sure that Mayor could explain this to you. He knows a lot about chemistry. My understanding is that it's many, many different chemicals. And hexamethylsilic acid is only one. And that is not the one that has any medical benefits whatsoever. In fact, has only negative benefits to the health. So there's really no reason, and the EPA mandate is not a law. It's a recommendation. You're not forced to do it, and I don't think anybody will be put in jail for, in this room, for voting down using fluoride in the water. And I think the citizens of Athens would applaud that. You would probably all get re-elected because people would really, really think it was great. And it would make a tremendous splash in the area. You would probably get lots of press and it would be positive because people are turning around the world against this. The word is getting out. No matter what American, the dentists say, no matter what the dentists say, they just, they're locked into this paradigm that they've been running with for decades. And this goes across the board. This is the way, you have an ossified government, which is afraid to turn around. It's like a huge giant ship, and it's heading right toward an iceberg, but it's so big it can't turn in time. Now, you're small. You can make, you can dodge around like a small little boat and dodge the iceberg. So I urge you to please be a progressive town like Athens deserves to be. We're known as an enclave of forward-thinking people here in a sea of mediocrity. So let's live up to our reputation. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you all. This concludes our agenda. So we will call this meeting of Athens City Council closed at 8:05. Thank you.